Guys, I apologize for being late. I have some people outside that was, had some situations. We are here today for our special call meeting. Today is July twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two. It's approximately six oh six. I'm gonna ask, um, who's here? Commissioner Henderson. He's always willing to pray. If you would, lead us in our prayer, please. And Commissioner Sanders, if you would, lead us in our pledge.
Um, Ms. Turner, I see Reverend just walking in. Could we ask Commissioner Mason if he would lead us in prayer?
You feel like praying tonight, brother? Okay, Commissioner Mason, if you would lead us in prayer? Sure. Thank you, sir. I greatly appreciate it.
You're welcome. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for bringing us back to this place one more time. We thank you for all that you've done for us and all that you are about to do. We ask that as we move forward to do your county business, that you would give us clarity in every single area and aspect of county business. We ask that you continue to unify us, lift us up, so that we can be all that you've called us to be in this community. We're thankful and grateful, and we give you all the kingdom, honor, and glory. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. It's all good. No problem. Whew. Again, guys, thank you so much for being here. I seek a motion that we adopt agenda, please. Thank you, sir. It was motion by Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner Cowan. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Mr. Sims?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So from our last meeting on July sixth, we had several suggestions from the commissioners to update a proposed SPOLOST list, and we took all of those suggestions into place. And tonight, we have a proposed SPOLOST list that reference those suggestions. And we're happy to discuss those items.
Ready when you're ready, sir.
Okay. So we did look at each of the projects, and we recognized that from the last meeting, Cousins was a project that you all stated you all wanted us to fund at the eight million dollars. And if that was gonna take place, we had to adjust the other projects. If you look at the projects, we were able to adjust those projects. All of those projects were adjusted from transportation projects, public safety projects, infrastructure projects, as well as our quality of life projects to accommodate the eight million dollars for Cousins. Also, there was a lot of conversations about parks on the east side. We also referenced funding for east side. We also referenced some park upgrades for District Five. And then also, there was a lot of conversations about a pool in our community. Not necessarily a center, aquatic center, but a pool. And we also referenced having a community water park, which include a pool, splash pad, something very small, but to reference having some type of water sport in our community. That was my understanding, the gist of the last meeting, and we referenced that in this proposed SPOLOST budget.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, any questions? Uh, Commissioner Sanders?
I just would like to, like clarification and details. You took the West Side Community Park down from the ten million to three million. Can you tell me what is gonna be built with three million dollars?
Uh, we're still looking at a park. We spoke with our project manager, Jeff Prime. He gave us numbers saying that we couldn't have a comprehensive park, but we could have a park similar to the other parks that we could grow into. So if we started with this particular phase, we could grow into additional phases of a park.
Is Jeff here? Because I would like to know, because I'm pretty sure the citizens is gonna be voting on this, would like to know what's gonna be in that park. Because for three million in two thousand twenty-two, buying land and everything else, that is not enough money with inflation and costs and prices. So I would like to know exactly what is gonna be entailed in this park if we're voting on it, because I'm a citizen too. I'm a voter, so I would like to know what's gonna be in the park.
Well, Jeff is not able to make it with us tonight, but he did give us those numbers and stated that this would not be an elaborate park, really big, but it would be phases, similar to the parks that we've had in the past, that we started off with a phase approach.
Does anybody know what, you know, phases? I'm asking honestly, because I have no idea what the phases include. Does anybody know what's included in the phase one of a park? Some of y'all been on here longer than I have.
I'm sure, um, a park, I'm sure it should be playground equipment. I'm sure it should be a ball field. It should be, I'm sure, a, um, what you call it? The, uh, the big, not the gazebo, what I'm looking for? Commissioner Henderson?
Pavilion.
Pavilion, yeah. It should be, um...
I'm glad you said that, Mr. Chairman. Because three million is not enough for that.
So I'm thinking, yeah, I'm...
With buying land in two thousand twenty-two?
Yeah.
That's not enough funding. That's why I was questioning that amount, if you're gonna put that in there. And residents would definitely like to know what they're voting on and what's gonna be placed in that area. I would like to know. I live in that area. So if we can get the details of what's gonna be placed in that area for the three million before we actually vote on this, especially put on a ballot, they wanna know what's going to occur for three million dollars.
So I'm thinking, and I'm sure this is the way it will work. So once it's voted on and approved, um, the county manager, the Rick Director, Jeff Prime, and yourself should be able to sit down and say, hey, the same way they do with other commissioners, say, hey, we want this, this, and this on the park. Yeah.
And the reason why I'm asking, Mr. Chairman, is because I did sit down with Jeff and them, and when they came up with numbers. And that's how I know the three million, based on what you mentioned, is not enough. So that's why I was asking. So what happens with the things that were mentioned is not enough funding for what is required? Are we just gonna give the citizens whatever? So I would love to know the details of that whenever we have, Jeff can provide that for us. And for the community water park, where is that gonna be located?
My suggestion, based on what I heard at the last meeting, on the western side of town.
Where?
On the western side of town. Where, it's, these projects, this project shouldn't be in a particular district. It should be wherever the county can find the best possible place to put it.
Well, the question, the reason why I'm asking that, because when we had the town hall with Jarvis all attended, that's what the citizens were worried about. Where was the location gonna be so it's feasible for them to be able to get there? If you're placing a pool or whatever in an area where all the citizens in the county can't get to, it's not gonna be utilized for everybody, everyone on the western side of town. As you could say, and on the main western side of town, which is closer to the Rockdale area, they pay Johnson Park to go to utilize their facility. So my, that's why I'm asking that question, is where is it gonna be located so that we can have relief for those who are paying other counties, giving their tax dollars to other counties, that we can support something that's centralized in Newton County?
So from my, my understanding is that the citizens on the west side don't want to come all the way over to the Y. So if we can find a particular place, I'm not saying a district, because I don't think it need to be in, single out a District Two or District Three. And we also gotta understand that District Four, Commissioner Henderson, serves the west side of town as well.
Right, he's close to three. That's why, yeah, he's close to three.
So, um, it'll be on the western side of town, which is, if you put it on, if it's on Salem Road, if it's on Brown Bridge Road, if it's on Fabview Road, the citizens cut their time travel from coming over here to the Y.
So the reason why I'm asking, Mr. Chairman, because that was the issue when it came to the West Side Youth Facility, of a name, and they wanted to know where it was located. So that's why I'm asking that question, where is it gonna be located? Because if you have citizens voting on something, they need to know where it's located, because this is where they, what they wanna vote on. This is gonna be on a ballot. So they wanna know if it's gonna be in the area close to the interstate or so forth, just throwing something on the ballot and saying it's just a certain area. Now, the West Side Youth Facility was identified by this commissioner, that was her project. Now, it shouldn't have been named the West Side, I get it. That name needs to be buried. But we need to know exactly where it's gonna be located. If you're having the citizens voting for something on a referendum on a ballot, and it's eighty-some million dollars, they would like to know where it's, I know, I would like to know where it's located.
So the reason that it was, and I was on the board when they did that, so the reason why they named it the West Side Youth Facility, because they wanted to serve the entire western side of the county, not a particular district. If you go back and look at the minutes...
Yeah, I have the documents. It was District Three. I have the documents, it was District Three. But we're not, I'm speaking of the word, West Side. I'm not talking about in regards to that, I was giving a example of utilizing that name.
Okay, so, so this is the thing. We have what people, and I don't know why they do it, what they can consider the eastern side, the south side, and all of that. So the pool would be on the western part of the county. It shouldn't be identified to say, hey, this is gonna be in District Three, or this is gonna be in District Two. Wherever the best possible place for the county to put this, put this pool on the western side of the county, where it is feasible for the county to do so, that's where it should go. That way, all the citizens of the west side of the county can take part of this and enjoy this pool.
Right, and that's why I'm asking that question about location, so we can make sure that everyone in the county can enjoy a pool, whether it's District Two, Three, Four, and Five, it's in a centralized area.
Okay, thank you. Let me get, um, Commissioner Henderson in.
Question that I had was, you know, considering our last meeting, and when we were talking about, we were talking about Cousins, and when we left, I think, I thought it was somewhat of consensus that it was supposed to be ten, ten million. And Jeff, he had said that for that, for that ten million, that they were gonna add on our cousins and football field, that they were going to do out front a memorial for the Black Easter March from Arica into Square. And then somewhere in the backside of a building, a community watch in honor of all maternal, because it's my understanding from the people who had contacted me, that that was one of the last things that he was working on, and they wanted, they wanted that to be completed and put up something really nice in his, in the memory of him and of the community. And so, we had mentioned, we added a pool, so would the pool still be, if the board decides put it on the spot, would the pool still be in, in that, I guess, building, somewhere indoor pool? I guess it goes to Jarvis.
From my understanding, from conversations with Jeff, eight million dollars was the amount that we could do something at Cousins. He talked about preserving the historic component, as well as some of the upgrades that you mentioned. But as far as with ten million dollars, as we know, when we left, we had to make major changes. Some of the changes are different from even the SPOLOST committee. And what we wanted to do was somehow maintain the integrity of the SPOLOST committee recommendations to you all while accommodating the new requests of Cousins. And I think we did the best approach we could to accommodate all. Everyone, you know, we have to find ways to find consensus and build upon those, because we can't get everything we want.
A follow-up question. Follow-up question is, if that, if, if the majority of the board, whether it was in Commissioner Sanders' district, or whether it was in District Four, or any district up here, if majority of the board, if that were what they wanted, and they direct you in the finance to find a way to do it, does that, does that mean anything?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, let me finish, please. So if we asked you how much money that it took, and you said ten million, that what Jeff said, and what's something I, I mean, something I came up with, said, and we asked you to find a way to do it, and you come across where everybody want this, everybody want this, but we can't do it. And this is, is one of the few times, well, this is the only time, I'm just gonna be very candid with you, that I sit on this board and we asked or directed the county manager, finance manager, to come up with a certain amount of money, place it on the ballot. I ain't saying you divvy the money out, place it on the ballot, and they'll come back and say, well, we just, we can't give you what you want, but we'll give you what we want you to have, rather than what we had asked you to do. And this is what I thought it was. We had asked you or directed you to do that. And, um, so, one of the things that, and I'm just gonna say this, and I'll be quiet, one of the things that I, that I asked this board, the board, the commissioners, I didn't, people who were voting, if we're gonna be successful on the ballot, then you, you will have to, you have to make sure that all the districts, at least get, I mean, a little bit more, I mean, you can't kinda show on some districts, and others, it's like you may give them a little bit more. For Cousins, that was something that was talked about, plan was made, and most, most people that have come back to me saying, well, you know, we understand that you weren't even part of it, and that's fine, but I'm a district commissioner. I have to represent the peoples in my district to the best of my ability. But have, you know, the stuff that we, we had put on, we didn't even get. But, so, but what we asked, since we gonna represent this area, we specifically, and Jeff gave us the number, ten million dollars. And I'm asking that a ten million dollars be placed back on it, on SPOLOST? I'm also asking stuff that we talked about, the pool be put back in it, if that is the wish, wishes of the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Cowan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is, um, in response to Commissioner Sanders' questions. And Aaron, I need your help on this, but if, it's my recollection that the Open Records Act prohibits us from discussing real estate acquisitions in the board. We have to discuss them in executive session. I mean, we can talk about a general location, but we can't talk about specific parcels, is that correct?
The, the Open Meetings Act has an exception for land acquisition, so that if you do need to discuss specifics, you, you don't have to do that in an open meeting, but it wouldn't prohibit the board from, from discussing it.
We can discuss, as a general rule, a need for it, but we can't discuss a specific site. Is that correct?
Yeah, my, my recommendation would be if there's a specific property that you're interested in, and you advertise that in a public meeting, that you need to acquire it for a certain price, and you're committed to do that on a SPOLOST ballot, it would be much harder to negotiate with the property owner to get a fair price at that point, because you've, you're committed to it, and you've told everyone you're committed to it. And then the buyer, the seller can name their own price. I think it would be a very bad policy decision. You're free to do so. The Open Meetings Act doesn't forbid it. It just creates an exception so that you don't have to harm the county's interest that way.
And one other thing, too. We appropriated additional, let's see, the prior board had approved four hundred ninety-five thousand dollars for a park in Spring Hill, which would not have reasonably covered the grading cost of that. We've gone back to the board and asked for three million on that, which I think will get a lot of us, a lot of it done, but that's also included, um, community centers and things like that, in addition to that, so. But there was no acquisition of land. So land costs are gonna be pretty high at some point, unless we're able to identify some county property, or we receive some property at some point, that will satisfy us for this. So, anyway, so I'm, I'm just letting you, let you discuss that.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanna add to the conversation. I don't, I don't want this board to, um, get into the mindset that SPOLOST dollars is gonna cover the entire portion of a project from A to Z, meaning that we are utilizing SPOLOST to cover land acquisition, construction, and project completion. There's no way possible that we'll be able to say every single project on this list that SPOLOST will cover one hundred percent from A to Z. So I don't want this board to think that that is the objective of SPOLOST. The objective is, is to take these, this amount of monies that we have, try to apply it to as many projects as we can, so that we can at least start on a first phase or a second phase. This is all a phased approach. And so we wanna ensure that the projects that we have on this list, that every single resident in this county that pays into that one percent SPOLOST tax feels as if this board has considered them, versus I'm only considering one area or one district of the county. We want our residents to think that this board has considered every single part, all the way to the uttermost parts of this county. That's the objective of SPOLOST. Not so that SPOLOST dollars will cover land acquisition, it will cover topography, it will cover, uh, construction, it will cover, uh, the build-out, it will cover the design phase. The objective is not that SPOLOST is gonna cover every single phase of that project. It's just to help get it started. This board has other methods and other ways of generating revenue where we can complete these projects. So I just wanted to put that out there so that this board understands that we're not utilizing SPOLOST to complete one hundred percent every single project on this list. It's just to kinda get it started. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I see, um, Mr. Sims, an east side park got added back, now was, was that what I was talking about at the last, the last meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Well, thank you for putting that on the list. I don't know if it'll make it or not, but thank you for putting it on the list. I wanna make sure that we, we don't wanna misname this. This is a misnomer, East Side Park. This is actually gonna be a South Side. We'll pull more from the West Side, as a matter of fact, where, the location I have in mind, anyway.
So we can rename that. We can, we can update that, but I just...
Southwest, South, whatever you wanna call it. I just, east is not, I know it would not be appealing to me if I sat over in District Four, District Three, you know what I mean? So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Sanders?
Yes, sir. For those who happen to be in audience, you can follow along with me. I put some copies on the table. And the reason why I am fighting for, I would say fighting, but speaking up for the park in that various area, is because it does cover three districts. So I'm not fighting for just one district. Some of the residents that live in District Three currently, because of the redistricting, they will be in District Two and Four, and no longer in District Three. So all of those residents, I'm gonna give you an example. District Three is the most dense, of course. You can see, I'm the commissioner of that district. On one road, there is fourteen subdivisions, fourteen, and another one that's currently being built, which will make fifteen subdivisions. That's Fairview Road. One subdivision has nine hundred eighty-five homes. That's almost three to four thousand people in one subdivision. That's a small, itty-bitty city. Then we have Fieldstone subdivision, which includes my district, which is Newton County, and Rockdale County, which is about seven to eight hundred homes. Then you move on down that road, which is about three to four hundred homes in each subdivision. Then we go down to Craw Road, which used to be District Three, which is now is District Four. Then you move on down to Brown Bridge, parts of that used to be District Three, which is now is District Two. I am not fighting for one district. I'm fighting for three, and those who live in that area who have never had access to parks and rec, to quality of life, and have to travel almost fifteen to twenty miles, depending on where you live in that district, to get parks and rec. And so if you look at that form that I actually put out on there, there are sixty-two subdivisions in that one box. They all considered District Two, Three, and Four. Currently, District Three is the only southern, only area that has the most building that's going on right now. You heard me say it many times. On Kirkland Road, there's a thousand homes being built, over a thousand homes being built. So that means more people. That area alone is about thirty to forty thousand people, including three districts. So this fight for a park and rec in that area, and making sure we have everything that's needed, and a park that's gonna be more suffice to be able to accommodate those amount of people, it can't just be an itty-bitty park. It can't just be something that we just thawing together. And as Commissioner Cowan said, their project costs four million dollars, but they already had the land. So you have to go buy the land. So three million, majority of that three million is gonna be paying for the land. Yes, I know about going to get grants, I just got a four million dollar grant for Congressman Johnson, to build and to add on to the West Side Youth Facility, which makes eight million dollars. So I know about getting grants, because I write grants. So I know all about that. But I'm fighting for three districts that has never had a quality of life and deserve the quality of life. So taking that from them, which the majority of your tax dollars and your impact fees are coming from District Three in those areas, District Three, Two, and Four, that's in that box, we call that the box. That's where your impact fees are coming from, that's almost funding this general budget. So those citizens in that area deserve the quality of life. And taking those funding from them, I'm not saying they can't, they don't need to owe ten million. Yes, we possibly do, but three million dollars is not gonna give a park that's more suffice for almost thirty, forty thousand people, and we're close on the borderline of Rockdale. So that means those people in Rockdale will be coming to our park. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Henderson?
Uh, thank you, Mr. C. Well, you know, Jarvis, I wanna apologize for saying, telling you give me a ten billion dollars, because, but, but what I would like to see over at Arica Cousins, and we had a, and running, I had a little sidebar conversation, was we had given a list, thank you right here, we gave out a list of the things that we had wanted to see over there. And we would like to, um, I guess at some point, either run it or myself, sit down with Jeff, Mr. Jeff Prime, and see, of that eight million dollars in the list that we had proposed to do it, what they, what it would actually, I guess, pay for a buy over at the renovation and, and the new part, possibly new part, Arica Cousins. The more I thought about it, I tell you, I just had a little thinking about it. See, in the first part of the year, if I'm elected, I would no longer represent Arica Cousins itself, the physical building. Now, Carson Trail, I will, but for its building, they'd be in commissioners, Cowan's district. And so, and he had suggested to me that maybe you have a, a meeting with the peoples over that particular area, and see if they still might want to have a pool in it, or whatever. But we both agreed that we wanted to save Costa and take off the other end if, if something was built, from Costa to DMV, and locate and find another place for the DMV. And so Commissioner Cowan will be, will be having those meetings with the citizens over that particular area about the, the amenities that will go in that historic building. And I'm just saying this, and I'm just concluding, the vote go, or whatever consensus go, or whatever term bring up for vote, go, is that one of the things I had said during the campaign, and I'm still saying, we don't want Arica Cousins pushed down. That's, that is the last Afro-American history in our county, in Newton County. And once you put it down, push it down, you will no longer have it. We wanna preserve our history, same, same as the Newton County High School. We wanna preserve it, same as several people want that. And I, too, want to preserve Newton County High School history, because it means a whole lot to all of us, and the same as Arica Cousins. And so I'm hoping that, um, since the district's gonna change, and Ronnie gonna be in the leadership for that, and I be in the leadership for the Spring Hill community, they'll set up those meetings and stuff, and, and, um... and work with the people. And I help them too as well, be on the board if you want me on, help them too as well, uh, to make it a success uh, for the peoples here in, in, in Covington. And I'm also, I'm just, uh, kinda reach out and I guess we wanna do, and I said it in, in District Three. I told Commissioner Sanders at our meetings, that I was in, in support of whatever she wanted to do over that way. She has my vote. But you know, two votes, you need, you need more than two votes and, and, uh, but make a long story short, I will continue to support Commissioner Sanders in her district and what, and what she may want for that particular area. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I was looking at, and I generally refer back to this quite often. Uh, we just came through a census, uh, back in two thousand and twenty. Uh, the ideal district, uh, population-wise, uh, was intended to be twenty-two thousand four hundred and ninety-seven in each district. That's twenty-two thousand four hundred and ninety-seven residents in each district. That's ideally. District Five, per the census, has twenty-two thousand four hundred and seventy-nine residents. District Four has twenty-two thousand three hundred sixty-eight residents. District Three has twenty-two thousand three hundred and fifty-seven, uh, in their population. And then District One is twenty-two thousand five hundred and twenty-seven, uh, thousand. And then District Two has twenty-two thousand seven hundred and fifty-two residents. So as you can see, District Two is the smallest geographically-wise, but has the largest population. Now, mind you, that may change because of redistricting. So it may grow even more. Uh, so when you look at each district right now, um, when you look at each, each district right now, that's what it's supposed to be. And so when you look at District Two, District Two has the highest population when it comes to our redistricting map. And because that's changing and more, uh, homes are being built in those specific areas that are now shifting, it's a possibility that that will change. And so when we talk about the western side of the county, we're talking about over sixty-seven thousand residents when in its totality, we have, per the census, about a hundred and thirteen thousand. So as you can see, the majority of the residents are on the western side of the county from a residential perspective. Uh, and so we do wanna ensure that when we look at going forward, SPOLOST, when we look at bonding projects, when we look at generating revenue from other resources, uh, I think if we want this SPOLOST to pass, we really want the, uh, all five counties to say, hey, you know, I'm getting a return on my investment as well. I'm getting something back, uh, in District One, Two, Three, Four, and Five. I'm getting something back to say, hey, I'm paying into it, just like with property taxes, I'm paying into it. So I'm getting something back from that. And so I want this board to keep in mind, uh, from a population redistricting perspective, who has the majority of the population and where they're located and how we want to move forward in making sure that, uh, every single area of our county is being, uh, taken care of and considered, uh, in this project. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Commissioner Sanders.
My apologies, Commissioner Mason, I have to correct you on those numbers. What you're reading is the current redistricting map. District Three had the only growth in Newton County, per the census. We had like twenty-six thousand, and I lost three thousand people that spread out to all the other districts. So what you're reading, yes, you have the most now, because it was, it was evened out. You're reading the wrong map. The census had District Three at twenty-six thousand. We had the only growth in Newton County. And I was told in the meeting, I'm gonna lose about three or four thousand people to District Two and to District Four. What you're reading is the new map.
Commissioner, uh, Cowan.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Just try to clear up a little bit what Commissioner Henderson mentioned. 'Cause I was, I was confused too. As far as Cousins School goes, I've advocated to you as the chairman and to Commissioner Henderson that we need to have a group of citizens or alumni or whatever to kinda like what we did at Spring Hill Park. We had, I'm sorry, what?
Go ahead. We hear you. Go ahead.
They couldn't hear me?
Go ahead.
Okay. Kinda like what we did at Spring Hill Park, we tried to get citizens' input into what, 'cause I, I have no idea what we, what people might be looking for. Um, I look at it strictly from a historical perspective. Uh, there's some value to the building. There's some use to the building that the county's already using. Uh, my question is, what can they, what value can we add to the community? And I want their input from it. So that's what I've mentioned to Commissioner Henderson about, was that we need to have a, you know, call it a focus group or whatever you wanna call it. But somebody need to put something together. I don't know who the alumni are of that school, but, but I would think it would be important at this point to identify that. Once we get that identified, then we go back to Jeff Prime and say, tell us how much this is gonna cost if we're able to do it. And that's how I would do it. So, I wanted to clear that up, 'cause I was totally confused by what he said.
Did you, uh, Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanna clarify, this was from two thousand and twenty-two that I read. So this will be as of January one, two thousand and twenty-three. This will be what is accurate. Um, and so I am reading the two thousand and twenty-two version of what it will be. So I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Um, guys, listen.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanna state that, uh, as we all know, we started out with a hundred and forty-one million dollars worth of requests. And our job was to listen to our SPOLOST committee to come up with a, a list that was comprehensive and took the entire county, uh, as a whole, uh, looking at the entire county. And that's what they did. And then from the last meeting on July the sixth, from the discussion that you all had regarding Cousins, we had to pivot and make the adjustments with this proposed budget. And I think we, based on you all's comments and suggestions, we did our very best to accommodate those things. If you look at the far right column, there was questions about if we could, uh, look at bonding any projects. And we proposed bonding about four million dollars worth of projects. We're also looking at our county, uh, maintaining our county's, uh, financial stance. Uh, we recognize that there are a lot of projects that you all want to happen. But if we start bonding too many projects, and you all stated in one of the meetings about potential recession, that could be a threat. So we were very cautious with the amount of money we wanted to bond as well. So we just took a whole, a holistic approach with this, with this list. And we think, we hope we are, were able to satisfy all. And recognizing that if we have further conversations, we can make some adjustments if needed. Yeah.
Also, also, guys, um, listen, we, there's a, there's a need for, uh, senior services on the western part of the county. We, we, we got that in here. There's a need, um, District Three, I completely agree with you. District Three need a park. Um, we got that on here. I agree with, um, a hundred percent that R.R. Cousins needs to be, it, it, it needs to be done. It needs some attention given to it. We got that on here. You guys stated that you wanted a place for a pool on the western part of the county. We got that on here. We got Newton Trails on here. You wanted that on here. Um, we got Nelson Height Community Center. You guys wanted that on here. We got Washington Street. Uh, we got CID. Um, we got the things that you guys asked us to put on here. And Commissioner Henderson, he can, he can speak the best of this. He done did more parks than anybody on this board. You don't, you, you, you can't, you don't do, Parks, Denny Dog's Park. Let me take Denny Dog's and Commissioner Mason, then tell me to say this, I'm gonna use Denny Dog's Park. Um, Denny Dog's Park wasn't done all at one time. Um, Spring Hill Park won't be done all at one time. Uh, Commissioner Henderson has Nelson Height Community Center, um, that he's been building for, I'm not sure, Commissioner Henderson, how long? A while, a long while. And he just got his.
Seventeen years.
How long?
Seventeen.
Seventeen years. And he just got his, how, how, how long have you had your basketball courts?
About a year.
About a year. So I'm not saying, uh, Commissioner Sanders, and hear me out, 'cause I, I, I think, I completely agree with you. We need a park on the western side of the county, on District Three. I don't think we need a, I think we need a park just, just big as Denny Dog, Denny Dog's. I, I completely agree with that. Um, but we gotta start somewhere. You know what I'm saying? We gotta start somewhere. Um, and we, and y'all tasked us to go back and give, try to give everybody who wanted something. And that's, that's what we did. Like I said, we, we went from, um, from, from, from even cars. We wanted cars. We got that in here. Fleet replacement, we got that in here. Uh, public. I mean, I, I don't know. I, I, I think it's a good, I think it's a good SPOLOST. You guys, this is what you asked us to do. This is what we went back and, and this is how we came up to make sure that everyone would get, um, what, what they was asking for. You, I mean, you, you can't get it all overnight, but you can get, um, you can get a huge start. But I'm, go ahead.
My question is for Jarvis. Um, the conversation that you and I and, um, Jeff and Dewayne were in, when you brought, uh, I don't know if you were here, you might not have been here. Um, senior services was brought in me to actually collaborate wherever our park was supposed, and maybe Dewayne can probably can, I don't wanna call him into it. They were supposed to collaborate with us wherever the park was supposed to be or the community center's supposed to be. So as that was being proposed for the Senior Service Enrichment Center, because that was the presentation that was given at SPOLOST, to the SPOLOST committee. So that's my question. I wish Jeff was here to expound upon that. So if that, those dollars are going towards that park and it's gonna be on the same land, 'cause that was the conversation and the presentation to the SPOLOST committee. So was that discussed when y'all put this together?
Yes. Yes, it was discussed. But I wanted to make sure that the list, uh, that we presented to you all today, which is a proposed list, was reflective of the discussion. You all stated, uh, seniors. You stated, uh, maintaining the park over the west, western side of the county. So if you all wanted to pivot today and say, well, uh, we wanna add or, uh, remove a particular project, we could do that as well. But I know there was conversation, a lot of strong conversations about a senior community.
Yeah, it was, it was supposed to combine with District Three communities. And that was the conversation I was brought into when we had a meeting. So that's, that's my question. And the reason why I'm asking these specific questions is I'm gonna be asked these questions. I'm pretty sure some of y'all are gonna be asked these questions, when and where it's gonna be. And so these citizens wanna know. And that's why I'm asking these specific questions. My, if y'all know District Three, they're gonna ask, where is this gonna be? Where is it gonna be put? Or they may or may not vote for it. So that's why I'm saying we need to put specifics on this, so we won't have any issues when we coming back, 'cause none of us, some of us may not be on this board. We don't know wherever God tells us to be. Maybe doing something else. So the next, it needs to be identified for that next board on what's gonna occur. They're gonna ask those questions. My district, I can't speak on anybody else's district, but I know mine asks specifically about different projects.
Um, Commissioner, uh, Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think it's gonna be very challenging to be specific on where a specific project is going to be. Uh, and the reason why I think it's gonna be challenging for us to decide, uh, where that specific project is gonna be, this is just a list of projects that we would like to see within our community. Once these projects go underway and go through planning, go through zoning, go through all of those steps, it's gonna have to come back before this board. And this board will have to decide at that point where the specific location will be predicated upon whether we have county-owned property, whether we have solidified land that we want to purchase to place that specific project on. This SPOLOST list isn't specifics. It is, hey, this is what we want to see in our community. This is what the, the residents are asking for. Once we can get it approved, then, once it's time to start designing, building, all of that, it's gonna come back to this board and this board will begin to decide a specific location at that time. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Sanders.
Yeah, I was just speaking to Commissioner Henderson, who's been on this board longer than us. We weren't here when the last SPOLOST was actually approved and they actually specified where locations were gonna be. So that's why I'm asking that information. So this is not new, a new question I'm asking.
Well, I, I was, I was, I had to correct that, because I was on this board. And if that was the case, we would have a location for the West Side Youth Facility right now.
Well, because it was supposed to be, because she wanted to go with the boys and girls.
No, it was, there wasn't a location identified, is what I'm saying. There wasn't a location identified, that's all I'm saying. Uh, Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you. Just gonna add a little bit to it, 'cause, you know, I, I think we probably, we need to move on. But, um, I'm just gonna say this, even when it came down to Denny Dog's Park, in fact, and, you know, I was wanting to name Denny Dog, Denny Dog's Park and name after Denny Dogs. Uh, we, we locate the property over there and we, uh, bought the property 'cause we knew that in the future, there was gonna be a need for a park over in that particular area. And I think the board then, uh, did a, a, a great job, because we bought the property and set aside there for that. And we just, maybe at that time, uh, we should, probably should have bought more property in each of the districts and, and had it set aside for that, but, you know, hindsight is always twenty-twenty. And most time, we, um, we knew exactly where we wanted, wanted to put a particular park because of the growth. And the growth was out there and still is out there. And, and the growth, um, if I'm blessed to be re-elected, will be also taking a, a part of, uh, District Four now. There will be index, particular growth. And so, um, it should, it should be, in my, in my opinion, and looking back, it should be identified so that there will be no doubt, uh, for the citizens, citizens of Newton County when they go out and cast their precious vote, that they know where, uh, they're casting their vote for and then come back and say, well, I didn't want that to be over there in District Four or something, something like that. Uh, there just no. And I, I've always wanted to be candid and honest with the citizens of Newton County, because that's all I've known for a long time.
Thank you. Commissioner, you had your hand up. Mr. Sims.
I think that's it for me, sir, unless there are other questions.
Anyone have any other, any questions? Board?
Well, I wanna say we do have a tight deadline, if anyone wanna talk about that again.
Thank you.
Yeah, just as a reminder, July nineteenth is the date that we need to have the contracts with the city approved and, uh, before the board for a vote. Um, so it gives us one week. Uh, the, the ideal scenario would be that, uh, the board votes tonight for its project list. And then, uh, I can take that project list, put it into an IGA, and we can deliver that to the city, so that the city can schedule a meeting to get this approved before you meet again.
Yeah. Let me ask, let me ask one question. But I can ask the board, do they have a problem with it?
Yeah.
I can do that?
Yeah.
Yeah. So guys, let me ask you a question. Um, so we know trending, um, Brittany, Brittany, if, um, if I'm wrong, let me know, okay? We know we've been trending, um, collecting more on Splot than, so that, where we will have overages, is that correct? Um, this board can allocate some of those overages to District Three Park if we don't have enough funds to, um, if we don't have enough funds, we can allocate funds to District Three's park to help, um, extend that park more. If that's the board, we just, we can do that. Because I, I want people, I, I want you to understand that. We, I agree with you, we, District Three need a park. Uh, but you got, you, you got the rest of your board members up here as well that's asking for stuff. So everybody gotta get, you know what I'm saying? Uh, and who's to say that the senior services won't fall in District Three? Who to say that the pool won't fall in District Three? We don't know. Uh, we trying to get the funds so we can go out to find out. If, you know, that's what, that's what we trying to do. But it can, overages can go towards that park extension, is that correct? Yeah. I mean, Patrick, Patrick just said he don't think we need to do that, but it can.
Yeah, so, um, the, the question is, can we put the, put the overage that it goes to a specific project to a vote? Um, I, I don't know if that can go on the ballot. I don't think it can go on the ballot that way.
But it can go in our minutes.
Yeah, it could certainly go in your minutes.
It can go in our minutes, though. Y'all, and it, let, let me, let me do this, let me poll the board. Do you have a problem with that, Commissioner Edwards? Yes. Now, I'm not saying all the overages, but I am saying some to extend the project.
I understand. So, but I thought we, like a couple of months ago, didn't, didn't we already do that? Didn't we?
No, that's, that was for the West Side Youth Facility.
Oh.
That's two different projects. But that's, that's for two different projects.
But, but that money's, but that overage is already allocated to that project, right?
For that project, but those, they two different projects. So we can, so this Splot has nothing to do with that project. So that's the way that-
You mean the overages from the, the upcoming Splot?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I-
Yes.
I'm with you now, thank you. I'm okay.
You have any issue with that?
No, I'm, I'm good.
You put this in the minutes? Um, Commissioner Sanders, you have any issues with that? Commissioner Henderson, you have any issues with that? Commissioner Cowan, you have any issues with that? So it's in the minutes. Nobody have any, no, any issues with that. Um, and, and that solves it. Because I think everybody up here think, knows that District Three needs a park. No, we, we can't take a motion on it, but we can put it in the minutes. So it's in the minutes, so can't nobody come back and say, no, I didn't say that I support that. Okay? All right. Nah, we don't want to start that, we don't want to start that. We don't want to start that. Any, any more questions for, um, about the projects? All right? Well, listen, guys, I appreciate all of you being here, we seek a motion. Uh, no, I'm sorry.
Call a motion to approve that as the project list, if that's the board's desire.
Okay, okay. So, so let me, let me amend this to Commissioner Edwards. Can you tell me the, the correct naming for that?
Uh, for the purposes of the Splot, I'd like to call that the South Side.
The South Side. So it's not the East Side, it's the South Side, so that we'll make sure everybody's correct. And then, guys, I seek a motion that we approve this Splot list. It's been motion by Commissioner, uh, Mason and second by Commissioner Henderson, all in favor? Pass five oh. Thank you so much. Guys, I seek a motion that we stand adjourned. It's been motion by Commissioner Mason, second by Commissioner Sanders, all in favor? All in favor? Thank you. We stand adjourned. Thank y'all.